Like, it's the same concept, right?
Would you like to call this meeting into order?
It is.
Can everybody please rise and join me in the Pledge Allegiance?
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic where we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite, and just as for all.
Thank you. We need a roll call to begin the meeting. City Clerk?
Brennan.
Here.
Mulner.
Here.
Doiter.
Here.
Seventino.
Here.
Leder.
Here.
Dunn.
Here.
Bram.
Here.
Palmsky.
Here.
York.
Here.
Saluto.
Here.
Park.
Here.
Levin.
Here.
Kennedy.
Here.
Conquest.
Here.
Fourteen present, zero absent.
Fourteen present, zero absent. The Mayor is not able to make it this evening. He had a family emergency, so during executive session I was elected Mayor Pro Tem for this evening. So we'll continue on with the meeting. Are there any written communications from the public that we need to present to the Clerk? Does anyone have any written materials? Seeing none, we'll move on to public comment. City Clerk, do we have any public comment?
Yes, starting with James Colbert.
Okay, you have three minutes to speak. Address your comments to the Chair. Name first. You do not need to give your address unless you'd like to.
Okay. James Colbert, 234 North Willow Road. And I rise to speak about the Turkey Trot permit application. And I just wanted to throw out a couple of facts that you may not be aware of. I have the IRS Form 990 from 2017. It says here, it says they took in $558,637 in revenue that year and paid out $172,155 in grants. That's 31 percent, slightly less than 31 percent. And only one of those charities, I think there's six that get $25,000 each, only one of those is in Elmhurst. So I went to Charity Navigator to see how they're rated. Well, Charity Navigator doesn't rate charities under $1 million in revenue per year, but they do have a guide for charities that take in less than $1 million a year. And on there it says to read the news. Check the charity's recent media coverage through Google News or another similar service. Now, if you've got Google and you go on there, you'll see that the Turkey Trot Organization has been in the news recently with a canceled concert and threats of litigation. Now, we won't get these results from this year's Turkey Trot on a 990 for two years. They're delayed. This is 2017's. We won't see 2019's for two years. So will they have liability? Will 31 percent, like in years past, go to these charities? Or less? I don't know. I think you should protect the citizens and look out for them before you vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
We have Loretta Colina.
Howard, do we have an issue?
This is from the action.
Okay. Yeah, it's, can you turn it up just a little bit?
I'm Loretta Colina. I'm here to talk about the, a parking issue that you have on your agenda tonight in front of Hawthorne School in the morning, a restriction on Arthur Street. I happen to be a person who attends Immaculate Conception Church every morning. The time that has been projected as a possible closing of that street would restrict parking to those of us who go to church every morning. And I'm very aware that children's safety has to be thought about, but closing off the whole, our side of the street from parking seems to be an imposition on old people. And I think we should be more creative about, again, maybe we need to be more creative about how we watch for the children's safety. Perhaps going through the Hawthorne parking lot, or their, through their property. I think there are other possibilities that we can consider. In any case, I would like to have you seriously look at what you're asking of us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jeff Williams.
Good evening. Jeff Williams, I'm the Director of Administration for Immaculate Conception Church and Schools. Obviously, I'm here to talk about the same issue that Loretta just talked to you about, but I'm taking a different tact. I have had the fortune of meeting with Manager Grabowski and the City Engineer to discuss this, and we have had good interaction and good conversation about possibilities and things that may help not only Hawthorne, but will also not have a negative impact on IC. I'm not here because I oppose the restriction. I'm here because I don't know if that is the best fit for us. It might be. I can't say with 100 percent certainty that it will not help, but it will have some negative impact. As Loretta shared with you, we have limited parking available for people that are coming to mass in the morning. There are discussions that were had with the City Manager about possible options to route traffic other directions around Hawthorne School, around IC. We have already, we rent space from neighboring churches, so we bring traffic off of Church Street into the back of our property instead of having it come down Arthur. We rent property from First Congregational Church to take some of our parking off-site, to put it away from the building. We try to do things creatively to lessen the amount of traffic that's there. One of the concerns we have right now is that there seems to be an increase in traffic, not just by the people that are dropping off their children at the two schools, but there are school buses that have never come down our street that are now coming down our streets. There are other traffic for people in neighborhoods that are trying to sneak through because Arthur is the only light. So we want to look at all of our options and ways that we could possibly improve the traffic and the parking at the same time without making a decision purely on the benefit of one entity. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anna Wick.
Hi, I'm Anna Wick. I'm a Elmhurst resident and also a Hawthorne School parent. I work on the Hawthorne PTA, and my role is drop-off and traffic safety liaison. This, so I am talking about the same issue, obviously. This role that I have is something that we came up with about a year and a half ago because we realized that things on Arthur Street were getting very dangerous. There had been a couple fender benders, there's been some near misses with kids, and we knew we needed to do something about it. So what we did is we worked together, parents and administration, and we came up with a procedure that we then wrote out and communicated to our parents and implemented with parent volunteers. And we are now continuing to do that every August when school starts again. When the procedure goes smoothly, it's really safe and efficient. There is one main thing, though, that can happen that will really cause the procedure to break down and become unsafe and slow, and that's when there is a car parked just in front of Hawthorne on that one side of the street after 8:00 AM. It really messes up the process and makes it unsafe because cars have to then pull out and pull back in to get their kids, the kids to school. So this seems about once a week we have a car there. It's usually a different car. It's not always the same person. So our drop-off time is officially from 8:00 AM to 8:12 AM, but cars do start dropping off a little bit early, around 7:55. What we're asking is not for the whole street to be changed. We're really just asking for the area of the street that is our drop-off zone to, instead of having no parking start at 8:00 AM, that that no parking just for that area of the street, which is half of the street on one side closest to Hawthorne School, would have no parking starting at 7:45. The rest of the street would stay the same, and we really feel like that would give a little bit of wiggle room for all the cars to be out of there by the time our parents start dropping off around 7:55, and we think that would be just the safest thing for all the kids who are trying to get to school. This change would also make Hawthorne consistent with all the other Elmhurst Elementary Schools, which have no parking starting at 7:45 AM in front of them. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Tom Rorden.
Tim.
Tim Rorden, sorry.
Hi, my name is Tim Rorden, and I am the Principal of Hawthorne Elementary School. I stand before you today because I strongly encourage you to pass the parking ordinance proposed for Arthur Street without hesitation. Please let me be clear, this is not a Hawthorne issue. This is not an IC issue. This is a student's safety issue. At Hawthorne, we try to get approximately 500 students on school grounds in about seven to 10 minutes. As you can imagine, there is a lot of coordination to ensure that all of our students arrive to school safely. When I first began working at Hawthorne, there was no structure to the morning drop-off routine. I have observed car accidents and countless near misses of students getting hit by cars. After collaborating with our community and PTA, we have created a highly efficient, structured, and predictable system that allows all of our students to get to school safely. I can say without hesitation that our system works. I mentioned before that our system is highly efficient, structured, and predictable. That comes with a caveat. The caveat is that there are no cars parked on the north side of Arthur. Even one car turns our predictable structure into a chaotic, unpredictable situation where cars are fighting to get in and out and find their way down Arthur Street, and student's safety becomes a concern. I'm not sure how much you know about the traffic on Arthur in the morning, but let me give you a glimpse. There is parking on the south side of the street. The middle of the street is used as a pass-through for traffic to get to York Road, and the north side of the street is a school drop-off line. If structure and predictability are missing, then the scene becomes chaos. I strongly encourage you to approve the ordinance this evening to ensure that Arthur Street is safe for all Elmhurst residents and students. Thank you.
Thank you.
Kelly Morgan.
All right, mine's about transportation, too, but my, I'm Kelly Morgan, and I 352 South Fair is where I live. I'm here to, I'm a cyclist, and I'm here to speak about the pedestrian flyover on Route 83 on the north side. I support this flyover as an alternate route, a way for us to get over Route 83 instead of having to go down North Avenue or other areas that are very dangerous. We have an online petition as well, and so far we have 928 supporters of that, as well as our bicycle club. I'm a member of Elmhurst Bicycle Club as well. This would provide safe passage to parks and trails for the north side of Elmhurst. We have a wonderful park on the other side of 83, Crickert Creek. I rode through there yesterday. It's underutilized, and it would be great to be able to get over there for children and adults as like. It would also be an attraction for people outside of Elmhurst and outdoor enthusiasts to come this way. There'd be great snow shoeing in that area and different, and just cycling over there. So hopefully you'll consider and work towards putting in this flyover. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jeff and Laura Fisher.
Good evening. I'm Laura Fishers. My husband, Jeff Fisher. We stand before you this evening as Hawthorne parents in our 12th consecutive year. We've seen a lot of changes over those 12 years. However, we are in strong support of the parking ordinance change. We ourselves have a son with special needs who we highly encourage independence and work very hard for, and unfortunately, last May was hit by a car while riding his bike to school by a parent that was dropping off at another school. And we see this change as the first step, and some larger changes that may need to happen, but we see it as a critical point in the safety for all of the children getting to and from school, for elderly coming across the street for church for many reasons, as we see cars just zigzagging in and out on Arthur. So we ask as parents that have had a near miss, which could have been much worse, for you to strongly look at this and let's find the best way for us to move forward so that all parties can see this as a success.
Thank you.
Claude Pagach.
Claude Pagach, 566 West Gladys. One of the committees had a little discussion with the public about marijuana. The city has, because of the state law passed, has a right to set up the marijuana stores, I guess. But why are they even being, being created? The state of Illinois looks at other states and says, hmm, they're making money. The city is looking at this. Hmm, we can do it, and we can make money. There's a little discussion about, well, we sell alcohol in this town. Yes, we do. Occasionally, I participate. We also have alcohol rehab clinics. Marijuana, according to the articles I've read of late, has become more and more potent. And as far as it only being sold to those that are 21, look at any other material that sold cigarettes, alcohol. Imagine your sons and daughters get a hold of it, and sons and daughters, people in this room. Laws are not set up and scare people. What they do is they avoid it. Now, if the whole planet is setting up these stores as to make a buck like the state is, then you better not spend it all. You better put some aside, because as you need alcohol institutions to help people out that can't handle it, you're going to wind up doing it with drugs. And the law isn't going to prevent anybody from laying their hands on it, especially the younger population. They get the booze, they get the cigarettes. The one thing that does come out of it, the states that have it, number of accidents go up, not just a little. Your hospitals will have their problem, too. And it leads to stronger and stronger drugs. Then you can open stores for those, too. It's your decision, but if dollars and cents are the only thing that this state has created bill for.
Would you wrap it up, please?
The city is doing the same thing, because they see dollars and cents. And both the state and this city better put money aside for rehab, because if you don't take that into account, you're going to have to reach in your pockets to do it. Ask your Chief of Police about it.
Thank you.
Kim Messina.
Kim Messina. I'm a 30-year resident of Elmhurst and a member of the Elmhurst Bike Club. I'm here to support the bicycle pedestrian bridge that is being considered over Route 83 on the north side of Elmhurst. As Kelly had mentioned, there's a lot of good reasons to consider this project. One of the things I want to add to what Kelly had mentioned was it will attract outside communities into Elmhurst. There's a lot of outdoor enthusiasts who travel from community to community to go to lunch, to go to dinner, to see an exhibit. And this bridge would be an attraction to, to travel over onto the north side of Elmhurst. It will also be an opportunity with passing the, for the Phase 1 project. It will also encourage opportunity to apply for grants and be awarded grants for such a bicycle pedestrian crossing, because there is a big push for alternative means to transportation, and biking and walking is one of them. And also, it would be a positive project for developing to, in addition to developing the north side of Elmhurst. It would be nice to focus on the north side of Elmhurst as it increases the opportunity for development as, you know, is in the plans. And, and just one more thing. In regards to cycling and safe roads and crowded schools and lots of children, a lot of kids live within two to three blocks of their schools. If more kids walked and more kids rode their bikes, and there was a more safe infrastructure and awareness, there'd be less cars on the road. Thank you.
Thank you. Any others? Is anybody else, we've gone through the list. Is anybody else in the audience wanting to speak? Seeing none, we'll move on to announcements. I have three announcements, and then we'll move on to one other people. Summer is coming to, has come to an end. This weekend is Rock the Block in City Center. It's a great time. It's a wonderful time for everybody to come out and enjoy the community. City Center does a great job with this event. I want to remind people, school has started. School buses are stopping to pick up students. When that stop sign comes out, stop. Do not go around it. Do not drive through it. Wait for the traffic, wait for the students to clear, because sometimes the students are not paying attention, and they'll just run in front of the bus. So please make sure you're paying attention as the buses are stopping and picking up children, and as you're at crosswalks. Last thing that I want to make an announcement about is the road construction on York Road at 290. It's backing up York Road significantly. Just be aware that that's going to be a project that's going to be ongoing through pretty much the month of September. So just be aware that that's going to be there, and try to find alternate routes if you can. Any other announcements? Seeing no other announcements, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Does anyone have an item that they'd like to remove from the consent agenda because they have a question or they want to vote no on an item? Alderman Saluto.
6.25.
6.25. Alderman York.
6.3.
6.3. Alderman Bryan.
6.12 and 6.24.
6.12. And what was the other one? I'm sorry.
And .24.
24. Thank you. Any others? Alderman Kennedy.
Yes, 6.7 and 6.8, please.
6.7 and 6.8. Alderman, Alderman Doiter.
Thank you, 6.19.
6.19. Any others? We have a consent agenda left. Okay, I need a motion to accept the consent agenda minus 6.3, 6.7, 6.8, 6.12, 6.19, 6.24, and 6.25. Alderman Bram, who's, Alderman Kennedy seconds. Need a roll call, please?
Brennan.
Aye.
Mulner.
Aye.
Doiter.
Aye.
Seventino.
Aye.
Leder.
Aye.
Dunn.
Aye.
Bram.
Aye.
Palmsky.
Aye.
York.
Aye.
Saluto.
Aye.
Park.
Aye.
Levin.
Aye.
Kennedy.
Aye.
Conquest.
Aye.
Fourteen ayes, zero absent.
Fourteen ayes, zero absent, zero nays. That item passes unanimously as it needs to. Onto item 6.3, accounts payable. Alderman York, we need a motion. Okay, Alderman York will make the motion to put it into play. Alderman Bram, one second. Alderman York, new question.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. So I was reviewing the accounts payable, and I noticed that my household is receiving a reimbursement for a city program for Dutch elm disease tree removal, cost-share program that's been around for a long time, and I'm going to abstain from voting on the accounts payable.
Thank you.
And everything else, just not mine.
Okay. Any other questions on it? Okay, roll call, please.
Brennan.
Aye.
Mulner.
Aye.
Doiter.
Aye.
Seventino.
Aye.
Leder.
Aye.
Dunn.
Aye.
Bram.
Aye.
Palmsky.
Aye.
York.
Abstain.
Saluto.
Aye.
Park.
Aye.
Levin.
Aye.
Kennedy.
Aye.
Conquest.
Aye.
Thirteen ayes, one abstention, zero absent.
Thirteen ayes, zero nays, one abstention. That pass, that item passes. Move on to item 6.7. I'm just going to, in this particular case, I know it's an oddity about 6.7 and 6.8, I'm just going to turn to the Chairman, and, because I know, I believe he wants to pull this back to committee.
That is correct.
Okay. We give the authority of the Chairman of the Committee to pull back two items, and these belong to his committee, so he's going to pull these two items back. Onto 6.12. Would you read the title, please, of the report, or the summary?
It is therefore the recommendation of the Public Affairs and Safety Committee that the Phase 1 engineering proposal from Trans Systems Corporation for the Route 83 Kingery Highway Pedestrian Bridge Project and the amount not to exceed $214,543 be accepted and the city attorney be authorized to prepare the necessary city council documents for approval.
Need a motion? Alderman Palmsky, a second. Alderman Levin, any comments?
I defer to Alderman Bram, who pulled this report.
Alderman Bram?
Thank you. This, this has been in our capital budget, I think, for the last two or maybe even three years or so. I think this is a good project, but I think the project is a nice-to-have. And I know and understand the intention of spending these engineering dollars to apply for grants. I know that this would help the north side reach this park area, but I also know that there are other, what I would at least deem from my perspective, higher priority issues that need to be done, that grant dollars should be applied for, and we would be competing against ourselves by moving forward with a project like this that I don't see the need to be doing in the upcoming 2020 fiscal year. One example, just to provide an example, is North, North York and Grand Avenue. It has been proposed probably 15 years ago, and actually discussions and a design was drawn to improve the safety of that intersection, the left turn lane of that intersection, which that has not been moved forward, which grant dollars could be and should be applied for for that, but we're, we're making a decision to move forward to something that has come upon us in the last two to three years. So albeit a good project, albeit a nice project, I think it's a nice-to-have, where there are other, at least in my perspective, higher priority, especially north side issues that could be moved forward with grant dollars.
Thank you. Any follow-up?
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. I, well, I first want to thank the residents, including some Boy Scouts, members of the Elmhurst Bike Club, who came forward to help promote this idea and to show their support. Alderman Dunn has been in touch with a number of residents in his ward, and also Alderman Leder. So this is something that is very much resident-driven. I'd also like to point out I'd also like to point out it is compatible with our bicycle plan. As far as costs go, next year's budget, this should only require about $74,000. And the idea is with a plan, we should position ourselves to have millions, hopefully, in grant dollars. What's interesting about this proposal and this report is that we already have committed partners, including the Park District who has already provided $15,000. I don't know when we've worked on a part, a project when the Park District has already committed dollars upfront. We know there's an interest with the Forest Reserve County. It's a, a good way to connect our community and especially, you know, we've got some, an announcement tonight about construction. One way to ease some of the, the pain of construction is to find alternative ways to, to get around. So this supports, you know, encourages more bicycling, allows connectivity to other suburbs, to the north side, and also brings more people into Elmhurst. I support it.
Thank you. Any other comments? Alderman Dunn?
Yeah, just a few brief comments. I, I want to thank city staff in particular for continuing to look at this issue and, and being creative. What, when the idea was first generated from some residents, some Boy Scouts, that there's a, a great resource on the west side of 83, but there was really no way to access it. I think Alderman Bram mentioned safety and, and there's, there's just a precious few folks that may wander across North Avenue at 83 or, or Lake Street at 83. That's quite formidable for a, a good bit of the population. So we have a, we have a good concept for a project. The, the likelihood of this moving forward without grants is, is minimal. We, we feel pretty confident that we're going to get grants. There's a lot of grant dollars out for mobility projects like this, pedestrian-friendly biking projects that gets a lot of support from the county, state, at the federal level. So I, I'm excited about it. There are 7,000 people near to, to where this proposed bridge would be. And that's just on the west side of, of York. It would also benefit those on the east side of York and, and north of, North Avenue in the third ward. So it's, I would ask the council to support it. And I think it would be just a fabulous asset for, for many, many years to add to the quality of life in, in Elmhurst and, and in that area. It's close to Barron's Park. There's a lot of activity there, which could, potentially translate over this fly, over this flyover into the, the park across the street. There's a school very close by that could, the students could potentially use that to, to, to go and investigate the park over there. So I'd ask for your support. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other comments? Alderman Levin?
Thank you. I just want to point out that it has been on our budget, in our budget, and by the fact that it is in our budget means that we've already given it priority, which is a. So the council has spoken that it is our priority over other things that are not in the budget. Doesn't mean we have to do it, but it means that we've already evaluated the importance of this project. Secondly, as we learned with the train station, if we don't do the engineering studies, we're never going to get a grant. If we do it, there's a good shot we would get it. I'm not sure that the same grant dollars that go for improvement of streets and highways are those that go for alternative transportation for bicycles and pedestrians. Lastly, getting the engineering done doesn't mean that we're looking at spending the money in a year or two. A lot of times, these are long-term projects. So I think it's important to get the engineering done and as we have in our plan and see where we go from there.
Thank you. Alderman Bryan?
Thank you. Yeah, I, I just want to say that I, I agree it's been in our budget. The budget doesn't mean, and we've had this debate up here many a times over probably many a decade, anything in regards to what is a priority or not. The project that I spoke about was in the budget for many years. Why it slipped out of the budget, I have no idea. That project is the face of Elmhurst. It's the entrance, the gateway from the north side of Elmhurst. Those are not only safety improvements from a vehicular, but it also does encompass other concerns. We also have a proposal from residents in regards to a proposed stoplight in that near area, a few blocks away. It's all hand in hand that needs to be done and we're competing against ourselves for grant dollars. I'm not trying to, to negate this project. I think it's a good project overall, but I think that putting this as a high priority at this time, it is a nice to have. I think there's a similar pedestrian bridge that goes over Irving. I want to say it's in Wooddale that leads to the Target. Yeah, probably see a few people, a good handful of people utilize it. But what I'm talking about, and I'm just utilizing one example, is something that is utilized by vehicular and pedestrian traffic every single day of the year. Will this really bring people from all over? I don't know. That's speculative. We, we, we speak in, in words that we believe that this is going to bring people from other towns and they're going to be spending sales tax dollars here. There, there's no evidence of that. Who will use it? I don't know. Is it a good project? Yes. Is it a lot of money? Yes. But I think that we should be looking for our grant dollars to utilize projects that benefits a wider audience than at least my perspective that this would.
Thank you. Any other comments? Roll call, please.
Brennan?
Aye.
Mullner?
Aye.
Doiter?
Aye.
Seppatino?
Aye.
Leader?
Aye.
Dunn?
Aye.
Bram?
No.
Palmski?
Aye.
York?
Aye.
Toledo?
Aye.
Park?
Aye.
Levin?
Aye.
Kennedy?
Aye.
Conquest?
Aye.
13 ayes, one nay, zero absent.
13 ayes, one nay. The item passes. Move on to 6.19. Would you read the title of the ordinance, please?
An ordinance approving, authorizing, and ratifying the execution of an amendment to the real estate contract for the purchase of property located at 113 through 121 Addison, Elmhurst, Illinois.
I need a motion. Alderman Toledo, second. Alderman Levin. Alderman Doiter, you pulled this.
Thank you. This ordinance is to amend the purchase price that's identified in a contract to purchase property on Addison. I voted against the contract to purchase this property and for consistency purposes, I'm going to vote against this one as well. I outlined the reasons for my objections when we reviewed the contract and I won't repeat them again tonight, but my feelings are the same way, whether it's 2.25 million for an acquisition or 2.15 million for an acquisition. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Brennan?
Aye.
Mullner?
Aye.
Doiter?
No.
Seppatino?
Aye.
Leader?
Aye.
Dunn?
Aye.
Bram?
No.
Palmski?
Aye.
York?
Aye.
Toledo?
Aye.
Park?
Aye.
Levin?
Aye.
Kennedy?
Aye.
Conquest?
Aye.
12 ayes, 2 nays, 0 absent.
12 ayes, 2 nays. Item passes. Move on to item 6.24. Would you read the title of the ordinance, please?
An ordinance amending section 4, 4.74 entitled Yield Right-of-Way Streets and Section entitled Stop Intersections enumerated of Chapter 44 entitled Motor Vehicles and Traffic of the Elmhurst Municipal Code.
Need a motion? Alderman Palmski? Alderman Levin, seconds? Any comments over here?
Sure. Thank you, Mayor Protem.
Palmski?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. This is an ordinance that reflects a report. A report was approved, but it was noted later that at one point, there's a Scrivener's error. It said Kenmore instead of Cursage. I'd like to just reiterate, this is based on discussions at the Public Affairs and Safety Committee on October 15th, 2018, or December 10th, February 11th of 2019, June 10th, July 8th, and July 22nd. We discussed this area a number of times. The committee doesn't often approve something that isn't exactly recommended by staff, including on the night that we made the recommendation to approve this. We did not have that same recommendation for a different intersection, but this is the ordinance to support the report that was approved.
Thank you. Alderman Bram?
Thank you. Yes, I made a lot of my points when we talked about the report two weeks ago. I really made most of my points in regards to the intersection of Chatham and Oneida. Two weeks ago, I made mention, when this ordinance was pulled back to committee, about Oneida and Cursage. I made mention that I, I, I didn't believe that Oneida and Cursage was meant to be a part of moving forward with stop signs instead of yield signs at that intersection. It is an accurate statement that the report does state, and the, the report was passed by committee unanimously as well as by council, both intersections. But with that, I think that's even a Scrivener's error. And the reason why I say that is both sets of meeting minutes reference one intersection. And I quote, "At this intersection," is mentioned in both sets of meeting minutes. And that one intersection is not Oneida and Cursage, it's Oneida and Chatham. Oneida and Chatham is what the study was really about. There's no accident history mentioned in the, the consultant's report about Oneida and Cursage. There's none. It does mention that they took some data points in regards to speed and volume, but that's it. In the report, Cursage is, the report from the consultant, Cursage is mentioned twice, twice only. And not in regards to changing anything, well, neither of these intersections were recommended by city staff nor the consultant in either year to change it from yield to stop signs. But in the report, it says, "Similarly, the uniqueness of minor leg yield control at the intersection of Cursage Avenue slash Oneida Avenue, located one block west of the study location." Of the study location. They're making a reference here. This report from the consultant doesn't even taking into account that it's be, this intersection's being studied. It goes on to say, "Is not a safety concern simply by virtue of comparison to other nearby intersections." That's one of two times that it's mentioned in the report from the consultant. There's no data points to say that this should be a, a stop sign intersection at all from the consultant. They didn't review it. It was a hand wave at best by the consultant, not to put words in their mouth, those are my words. A hand wave at best because there's no recommendation whatsoever in regards to this intersection. The report that was signed by all committee members were signed by city staff for the, the committee at the time. I'm not saying that wasn't the intent, but as you heard discussions last time about this, I made mention that is a Scrivener's error. The mayor, and I wish he was here tonight, the mayor turned to the city attorney, said, "Would this be considered a Scrivener's error?" The attorney said, "Yes." Everybody two weeks ago said it was a Scrivener's error. The committee brought it back to committee under the assumption that is a Scrivener's error. They made the statement that it was a Scrivener's error that, that night. They made a statement about a Scrivener's error tonight. But we're moving forward with two intersections that don't meet the MUTCD at all. The one that was studied, both times, city staff and the consultant, two different consultants said, "No. No to stop signs." This other one, Cursage and Oneida, this one hasn't really even been studied, at least, at least by the latest report, but we're recommending per ordinance that this moves forward with no data points? Talk about lawsuit waiting to happen. I don't understand on how we could actually move forward with the one being Chatham and Oneida, but let alone the other one, that there's nothing backing it. Nothing at all. How do we move forward with that? But we're saying that this is important. My hearts go out to the residents who made the request for this intersection to be evaluated. But the intersection that was really evaluated was Chatham and Oneida. Oneida and Cursage shouldn't even be on here. Shouldn't be mentioned in the report, shouldn't be mentioned in the ordinance. There's not even a stitch of data to back it up. I strongly, strongly disagree with moving forward with this ordinance as written.
Any other comments? Okay, I just have one comment that I just want to make sure, so we have a clarification of something. When this was sent back, it was actually sent back to the attorney for a review and the attorney reviewed it and then it came back to the committee just for a clarification. The council, not the committee. It never went back to committee. Roll call, please.
Aye.
Mullner?
Aye.
Doiter?
Aye.
Seppatino?
Aye.
Leader?
Aye.
Dunn?
Aye.
Bram?
No.
Palmski?
Aye.
York?
Aye.
Toledo?
Aye.
Park?
Aye.
Levin?
Aye.
Kennedy?
Aye.
Conquest?
Aye.
13 ayes, one nay, and 0 absent.
13 ayes, one nay. This item passes. Onto 6.25. On this particular item, I'm going to defer this to Alderman Toledo and...
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Protem. I submitted a letter with my signature and three other aldermen's signatures requesting per code that this ordinance be postponed, for lack of a technical term, for two weeks to the next city council meeting to allow more time. As the council heard tonight, there were some differences of opinion and it came to my attention early this morning. I'd like to have some time and the council have some time to take a little bit more information on that. Thank you.
Having reviewed this item, if three aldermen sign a report that says that they'd like to defer a report for two, an ordinance for three, two weeks, that's allowed with no discussion. Why isn't my point of order not recognized?
I'm sorry, Alderman Bram, go ahead.
Go ahead.
So the letter states by total of three aldermen that we're postponing two weeks, not going back to committee, but postponing?
That is correct. And that's what the ordinance calls for in chapter two. The ordinance in chapter two allows you to postpone it for two weeks on an ordinance so that they have an opportunity to review something if they feel there's a necessity to.
Thank you. First of all, I mean, don't we need a motion first to bring this before the council and then it gets deferred?
Not necessarily.
Second of all, do we need, we, who, I, we need to know who the three aldermen are? I don't know if it's been, has it been disseminated?
It was a letter to the city clerk from Alderman Toledo, York, Mullner, and Kennedy dated 9/3/2019 regarding MCO-13-2019. It says, "We respectfully request that ordinance, MCO-13-2019, be held for passage until the next meeting of the Elmhurst City Council. Sincerely signed by Alderman Toledo, Alderman York, Alderman Mullner, and Alderman Kennedy."
Okay. Okay, that concludes the consent agenda, agenda for this evening. Now we move on to committee reports. We have one report. Would you read the recommendation, please?
It is therefore the recommendation of the Finance, Council Affairs, and Administrative Services Committee that the city council accept the 2018 Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, the 2018 Single Audit Report, related communication from Sickich LLP, signed Noel Toledo Chair, Kevin York Vice Chair, Tina Park, unsigned, Michael Bram.
I need a motion to move this forward. Alderman Toledo, Alderman York, seconds. Alderman Toledo, your committee, your report.
Thank you. This is a short report, but I, we chose to place it on their committee reports as it's an important report. It reviews the 2018 Comprehensive Annual Financial Report that is prepared on an annual basis, the 2018 Single Audit Report, and various related management communications to the city. I'm happy to report, as you read in the report, that we have another year of a clean audit, that all financial statements were presented fairly in all material respects regarding the financial position of the city of Elmhurst. I will note that as of, as far as Director Trozine and Mr. Berg, who has been auditing the city of Elmhurst for over 20 years, the city has had more than 20 years of clean audit reports. So a great job by the staff here. I'd like to thank Director Trozine, Assistant Director Hayes, and the rest of the finance team, and all who are involved in this on an annual basis, and helping the city make accurate and transparent financial reporting for the residents to review and inspect. I will note that there was a single audit this year. We don't do that every year. That was triggered because the city did receive federal grants in excess of $750,000 this year, and that triggers a special single audit of those monies and other monies that come from federal and state programs. That was directed, those monies were directed towards the wastewater treatment plant in 2018. And I will take any questions, and I ask for your support. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? Alderman Bryan?
Yeah, I just want to say that I was unable to be on time for this meeting, and therefore I support this as well.
Thank you. Any other comments? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Brennan.
Aye.
Mullner.
Aye.
Doiter.
Aye.
Deppatino.
Aye.
Leader.
Aye.
Dunn.
Aye.
Bram.
Aye.
Palomsky.
Aye.
York.
Aye.
Toledo.
Aye.
Park.
Aye.
Levin.
Aye.
Kennedy.
Aye.
Conquest.
Aye.
Fourteen ayes, zero nays, and zero absent.
Fourteen ayes, zero nays. This report passes. On to reports and recommendations by appointed and elected officials. The mayor has none, and I have none. City manager.
Thank you. I have a few to make up for that, so... The first, I'd like to announce that the museum has a new exhibit opening Friday, The Power of Children. It's a traveling exhibit that we've booked, and I know that Director Dave Oberg is very excited about it. It opens this Friday, and I would encourage all residents to go and view this. The second item are a couple of construction updates. North Avenue was delayed on the paving side of it because of adjusting the manholes that are in the project. Either they're more difficult, or there are, there are some problems with the schedule that they had in adjusting those. So we understand that paving will start this Saturday or Monday, so then September 7th or 9th is when paving is going to start. Also, a new project that Alderman Mullner brought up was the I-290 Bridge at York Street. A few months ago, that was hit underneath by a vehicle, by a truck, and if you stop and look, you can see that some of the beams are damaged. IDOT is going to make the emergency repairs on those. They've already closed a couple of the ramps. The eastbound exit ramp to York is closed, and the eastbound entrance to I-290 from Lake Street is closed temporarily. They are going to have daytime lane restrictions on that, and nighttime lane closures. When they first came to us and had a detour plan, they were going to shut down the entire road, basically, to our emergency vehicles. We met with them, our police, fire, and public work staff met with IDOT, and worked out a plan so that we made sure that we'd still have emergency access to the north side of town, and back and forth for both police and fire. And then we have neighborhood roll calls this week. Tuesdays, roll call is at Commonwealth and Beverly, which is the southwest corner of town, and Thursdays is at Holly and Ridge. That's what the Police Department Neighborhood Roll Calls. Both of those start at 6:30. And then the last item that I have, we sent out an email to the council late today. We continue to field complaints about coyotes in town, and while we all know that it's part of urban living now, and that they do help control other rodents in town, to the point where we did more research on what we could look at as far as, at least tracking them and ensuring that the coyotes that are living in town are healthy. We've contracted with a company called Scientific Wildlife Management, and what they're going to do is set up a website where residents can report when they see coyotes and where they see them. And that's the first step that this, this company uses to start tracking, to see where the coyotes are living, and potentially if they are ill. And so in addition to notifying the company of where they've seen the coyote, the resident will also be asked to report the behavior of the coyote, and possibly the condition of the coyote, if they can see the coyote. In other communities where this company has worked, they have been able to find coyotes that are ill with mange, and coyotes that are ill will behave differently towards residents, towards humans. And so the hope is that if we do find any that are sick, that those can be taken care of as we need to. Otherwise, healthy coyotes would continue to live in town, as they do throughout all the communities in the Chicagoland area. So we sent out a press release late today as well, and I believe that the website is up and running. It's called Scientific Wildlife Management, and all that information is on the city website also. That's what I have.
Thank you. The coyotes I've seen are very healthy, and they look like German shepherds that were just groomed. Any other reports or recommendations? Seeing none, I need a motion to adjourn. Alderman Kennedy, Alderman Leader. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? We're adjourned.